Like over something like. We did that, like selling.
It was Tim.
We got, we got.
Oh, we gotta make sure everyone's here.
Shocker.
Unbelievable.
Great, six o'clock. Call a meeting in order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whenever you are ready, Henry, if you could do a roll call, please.
Sure.
Henry Anderson here. Courtney Knijmle.
Here.
Jules Gesske.
Here.
Brock Ray.
Here.
Eric Bryan.
Here.
Joe Sanlipp.
Here.
Brad Sorenski.
Here.
Ashley Goodman Mason.
Here.
John Goodman.
Here.
Debraina.
Here.
Yeah, you don't have to, they're not here anyway, so we're there. Uh, public notice meetings, compliance with statutes and statutes, chapter nineteen eighty-four, posted at the elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as the post office and unity bank. At this point, looking for approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make that motion second.
Roll call vote, nevermind, is Henry?
Gesske?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Knijmle?
Yes.
All right, next meeting day, September twenty-sixth, which is next Monday at six P M., October seventeenth, November twenty-first, December nineteenth. If there's any comments, if there was.
Twenty-sixth, they're Friday here.
Okay, I might be just a few minutes late, so I might have to wait another.
Okay. Also twenty-sixth, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that I'll be here on November twenty-first.
You're not doing serious?
Huh? Yeah, I've been ordered to take time off, so. All right. On to student highlights, which.
We're gonna, yeah, we'll hit those during the, the last piece of your dash.
Good, and then we're gonna go to introduction of staff.
We have a, a number of new staff that are starting with us this year that not here tonight, but Nick Haas, Stieker, Rich Cranes, Katie Warner, Courtney Kaler, Jesse Evans, and Nancy Peterman have all joined the crew, and we're really excited to have them, so they're doing a great job to start.
Perfect. And we're gonna move on to consideration of student council representatives for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
So Megan Johnson and Miss Rarson are the two representatives that will be joining us, and approval by you guys. Megan was here last year as the president-elect, and Emily, um, was in here this week, so you can probably move to that spot this year.
Good kids, they're both fantastic.
All right, so at this point, look for a motion to approve Megan and Emily as the student council reps for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
To make that.
A second.
Roll call vote, nevermind, please.
Bryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Knijmle?
Yes.
Gesske?
Yes.
All right, move on to general public address of the board. If you could, if you have something, if you come up and state your name and address, please.
Uh, may I should us to the board, um, to opening a fourth section, um, kindergarten, um, when upcoming here.
Anything further?
Um, well, we have our paper.
Yeah, I mean, so we just think that, you know, in the letter I sent to the majority of the board members and, um, Dr. Joe today, um, you know, we just gave some brief examples as to why we think this would be an excellent option for our kindergarten students, staff, and aides. Um, just because the size right now is unbearable for a lot of people, or for the staff, and aides are having to stay late, which we accommodate for safety, so. And after doing some research, it looks like our students are, this is some of the largest class teacher ratio in the area, and even if we add a fourth section, we're still probably gonna be some of the largest in the area. So, yeah, considering and. So we've also submitted the signatures of other parents, um, in the kindergarten class that are in support for this, um, or seeing something to help mitigate the issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the board meeting held August twenty-second, minutes of executive session held August twenty-second, financial statements stated August two thousand twenty-two, approval of monthly receipts and checks, student activity account receipts and checks, consideration of snow removal bids, um, also consideration of approving the academic banquet, and F F A overnight trip, and a donation. So at this point, look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as reported, please.
Make that motion.
A second.
Roll call vote, nevermind, you're ready, please, Henry.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes. Knijmle?
Yes.
Gesske?
Yes.
Bryan?
Yes.
All right, move on to staff report, starting at the policy committee report.
So on September thirteenth, we met as a policy committee to, uh, talk about the next set of policies to go through, and things that we really wanted to jump into in terms of the conversation, of make sure that we're aligned across the board, not only from a document standpoint, but from a programmatic standpoint, and so, uh, Courtney and I were able to meet during that time, and we followed up with, I followed up with Brock after. Uh, we started with the, it was the first time that we started with the student section of the policies, which really got into the student, um, admission process, the attendance process, rights and responsibilities of all of our students, and that's about where we ended, because the document is enormous, and we got through the four thirty, we had through four thirty-five, from four ten to four thirty-five, and at that point, uh, we were about done. So what we'll be doing in the next, uh, at the next meeting is proposing any changes that we came up with. Most of them are formatting, document changes, but there are some that we wanna make sure that we're in line with when it comes to, um, census stuff and things like that. So we'll bring those to the board for their first approval in October, and then the second approval in November. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, that's it.
All right, any questions? Ah, move on to the ministry reports and board actions, starting with business and finance.
Okay, just twenty-three to thirty-three, you're finding that our technical final three were required. So just a reminder that the, the budget that's reflected in the booklet in this report is not our final budget. It's reflective of the annual meeting budget that we approved last month. It's the budget that we will then also see next week at the annual meeting. And then come October, you'll be brought a final budget for approval, and that will be considered our original budget then for the remainder of the year. And a reminder of why it becomes, or why we're already in October before the budget becomes final, because we don't receive our final state number until October. So, uh, budget is balanced, it reflects what you've seen, so no surprises there. We're, we're trending just fine, as expected. You'll see we're a little ahead of schedule, we're about one percent ahead of schedule in expenses for the general fund, our Fund Ten. That's primarily because for our property liability insurance, we used to pay on a monthly basis, and they revised their invoicing to invoice all upfront, so that has been paid. The other item is that our summer school is in higher than anticipated, that's in our, on page twenty-three in our one seventy expense function. And so we'll adjust for that when you get to your final budget, and just a reminder on that, we have to pay our, our summer school out of Esser funds for the next couple of years, that was one of the things that, um, needs to be in Esser. And so with that increase in expense, we'll claim more in Esser funds, so that won't negatively impact our budget, it's just an adjustment we need to make. So, um, we'll be working with this budget for about another month. We are continuing to gather adjustments that are needed for October, and we'll be sure to bring more change next month.
Any questions?
No.
All right, if not, we'll move on to the Esser statement.
So I have a quick presentation for you on Esser, just some background on this. In December, we had our first Esser report, and really it was here to catch you up on this Esser funding, what is it, how much have we gotten, where are we? And at the time, we committed to updating you regularly, so that it stayed in front of you. And the reason why we have this coming as an update is it's just a larger-than-typical allocation for us, or set of allocations, so we wanna make sure you're up to speed on where they're going, how they're being spent and such. So this is just an update for you through June, and then we'll bring back to you, uh, in spring through December. So this is as of reported, uh, as reported as of June. Some of these slides are going to look very familiar to you, this is the exact slide that we had back in December, and I really took December's presentation and updated it with numbers, so you wouldn't have any surprises tonight. But the Esser funds are federal grant funds, they came about during the pandemic, and there were three allocations, Esser, it, it was CARES, Esser Two, Esser Three, but they have since returned to be Esser One, CARES became Esser One, Esser One, Two, and Three. And as we, as they provided the allocations and as we spend, they categorize the, the budget and the expenses into six categories. You're preparing and responding to the pandemic, you're outreach-ing, doing outreach and services to special populations, things that have come up due to long-term closures, educational technology, mental health supports, addressing after-school and summer activities, that's where summer school falls, and then continued staff employment. And so as we report to you throughout and how we use them, we'll categorize in these areas as well. Oops, sorry. There we go. We'll go into each of the Esser funds in more detail, but this is our information for our allocations, Esser One, Two, and Three. So Esser One came in nineteen twenty, it was sixty-six thousand dollars, and, uh, we spent all of it right, um, right when we received it, so although it came out, it came out late in nineteen twenty, and we used it right away that summer and claimed it. We're one of the first to claim, actually. Um, that expires soon, and so while most districts haven't claimed, ours was claimed and gone. Esser Two, the allocation was released in two thousand twenty-one, we claimed and used everything in two thousand twenty-one as well. Remember, that was the timeframe of great pandemic costs, and I'll explain what those were and how we used it. Last year, in twenty-one, twenty-two, they released a second portion of Esser Two, and for us, it was a hundred fifty-nine thousand. We did claim a small portion of that last year, and so what remains as of June is a hundred thirty-three thousand. And we have spent some of budgeted and spent some of that already, which we'll be claiming next quarter. But we, as of June thirtieth, we have a hundred thirty-three thousand left of that. Esser Three, we knew about, and they talked about, but we didn't, they didn't release and didn't finalize our allocation until twenty-one, twenty-two. And interestingly enough, in June, we got an additional eleven thousand two hundred dollars that we added to it, and we've already claimed it. It was related to some reading training we had already done. So we were one of few, because we had done the reading training, we were able to get in on the first round. So if you compare this, the twenty-one, twenty-two allocation in this report to the December, you'll see that it was adjusted by about thirty-four thousand, and that's, uh, twenty-three thousand, we got extra, uh, in a, a just, uh, D P I adjustment mid-year, and then eleven thousand two hundred specifically for the facilitator's ones. I know, I can look at what that acronym means, but I don't know it off the top of my head, so if you want me to look it up, let me. But as of June thirtieth, we had six hundred twenty-five thousand in that allocation left to spend, and it expires in September of twenty-four. So we have all of this year and all of next year, and then summer school, the following summer, that we have. Just a reminder on our Esser One, we use those for our teacher laptops, and we also use that to start diving into those pandemic costs, such as face masks, hand sanitizers, face shields, thermometers. And so all of that is spent well before the deadline, much of it on educational technology, so that we could, could support the online instruction that we ended up doing. Esser Two came, and for much of that, two hundred sixty-seven thousand that we claimed very late, we had actually already needed to spend it, and really those dollars just allowed us to, um, claim it. We spent it on personnel, um, substitutes, and we bumped up the pay for our substitutes during that time. We had a first, extra first-grade teacher, we had an overload, we had to increase support staff time. In our purchase service area, we had to have storage unit, we moved up furniture in order to have social distancing. Hotspots were purchased, we had elementary virtual platform. And then, um, in the non-capital area, we had more supplies of face masks, and I remember in December, you were like, oh, yeah, remember those sanitizer sprayers and those extra lockers? So that's all review. Um, we also paid our, our four K math curriculum that we talked about, we also took that out of Esser Two funding. So all of those things have already come out and represent the two hundred ninety thou, or hundred, two hundred ninety thousand that we've already claimed. Of the remaining funds, we are, um, you, we have used it for our math curriculum, it's encumbered. Uh, we have, uh, we had some curriculum work done this summer, so paying that curriculum, the substitutes, again, growing the learning and helping us teach more effectively. The building safety that, that we've seen, the fobs and such, we took that out of our Esser funds. We still have hotspots that we are deploying, and then, uh, those are all on top, so these aren't in order of priority, but we had set aside allocation for the kindergarten support and the additional supplies needed. When we talked about this last week, we didn't know what the solution was, but we knew that additional dollars were needed. So that will use up the rest of our Esser Two allocation, and then we'll need to dip into our Esser Three to cover the rest of it. So Esser Three, you can see we've used very little, we do have plans for much of it, but I think that the kindergarten is a good example for us. Well, we wanna have a good plan on how to use this money, because it's a lot of money. We also want to leave enough flexibility, so that when things come up that are unknown over the next couple of years, if they apply, we have these dollars to tap into to address. So the Esser Three funds, just to note, twenty percent must be used to mitigate learning loss. We currently, of what we have budgeted, seventy-three percent is, so we're well beyond addressing that learning loss minimum that the federal government requires. And then, just as we talk about a lot at the board, but as a good reminder, these are short-term funds, they expire in two years, so we're being very cautious in how we use them, we wouldn't want to add a forever expense with short-term money, because we wouldn't know how to fund it when the dollars were gone.
And that's one of the things that's important about the conversation specifically to certain areas of the, like, if we're gonna add additional support, it's gotta be temporary support in terms of what we do, but we also need to have it be part of a long-term conversation, um, moving forward, and that's how we get in, that's how we got into the kindergarten conversation last week, and that's how we're gonna get into what that looks like at early grades, pre-K, K, and one, moving forward.
So so far, of the eleven thousand two hundred, it all fits into addressing our long-term school closures, which is where a lot of the curriculum falls. They, they feel that, um, when curric, that curriculum has changed, designed to catch students up, to provide the support they need, they feel in this budget that that fits under that long-term closure. So anticipated uses of the remaining funds, summer school has come out and will, we can actually take again next summer and even the summer after, the allocation is still there. Um, the rest of the kindergarten support, that can't be covered in Esser Two, because the funds will be exhausted. Um, reading curriculum, we're doing that reading audit that we've talked about, so that, when the final number is known, is earmarked here. Curriculum pay to support bringing on a new curriculum, again, more hotspots. And then through our conversations in December, we have already implemented the expanded youth options via the summer program. Two other ideas that are still there, we don't have to do them, but the dollars are there right now to meet them, expanding online learning in the middle school, and then the ask was for additional communications, website app, to support transitions both as the middle schoolers move into high school, and then for parent communication. So we don't know exactly what that looks like, but we wanted everyone to know that that was an idea that came up, and it's still in the, in the discussions, just not fully designed yet. So my experience with these funds is that although every dollar is not allocated as of today, um, it, we've set ourselves up, they will be certainly by, by the end of September, but we've set ourselves up really well to address the needs we know now, and leave us some flexibility for the unknowns that still may come. So next steps, um, we had committed to reviewing every six months, is that an okay cadence for you, or would you like it, um, more frequently? I don't think we, unless we need it more frequently, but I think.
I think it's a pretty good.
Mm-hmm. Okay. We, we report, I, we do our claims quarterly, so we could if you wanted, but every, so if you want it sooner, let me know. Otherwise, we'll plan to bring it back, um, after December closes. Um, we're gonna, again, focus on non-recurring expenses where possible. We'll be sure to fully expend and utilize those dollars by the timelines. And then it may not surprise you that there is additional federal reporting that goes along with it. And so know that we are up to date and all required so far, and we'll.
Your side.
Yeah. Any questions? Anything you want me to deliver to them?
Thank you very much.
We get a copy of that?
Yeah, sure, oh, I'll start doing that, last time you asked for that, and I sent it after, I will.
Just email it out, okay?
Can I?
Send it.
Send it, oh, you have it?
Yep, I'll send it off to you.
Okay, thank you.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, no motion, I'm gonna request it for there, so we can move on to analysis by administration, starting at the start of school.
All right, so we, all, all, uh, of our administrators have done a great job getting everybody going in the, to the beginning of the year, so if you want them, we have an opportunity to just share a little bit about how that's going for them, and, um, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so we did an open house model this year for the elementary, and we felt that went really well, since they have to travel some families to middle school and high school, so it was more of a drop-in, connect with their teacher and get that information rather than scheduled times, as we've done in the past, or scheduled meeting times. Um, it was really busy, it was good energy in our building, we, um, did the, um, packed the bus, was open for middle school and elementary families to come down and get any of those little needs that couldn't be met. And then we keep those supplies going throughout the school year for our staff to come down and get them for their students. Now, um, Megan Jakey had organized through scholastic funds for every one of our students to receive a book, um, that came through, so they all were given a book to start the year too, which was exciting, and at their grade levels. Um, so it was a good start to the year. We are excited to announce that all of our assessments are done already, which is, maybe seems minor, but we put together an assessment team made of Megan Jakey, um, Kendra Meek, and then our truth speech pathologist, Katie Borison, and April McAvoy, and myself, and we did all the testing for K one, just so that teachers could stay in their classrooms, um, because you have to administer that test, it's not a computerized test for them to take at that age, but we're done. So we got it done in two weeks, and now we'll look at that data actually on Wednesday to start making decisions on what we need to do to start the year off, so. We're off and running. Thanks.
One of the things I, I wanted to add to Ashley's piece of it is, if you haven't seen the Instagram feed for some of the cool things that are going on, um, the reels that are coming here are just really, they're just really cool. This was the first day of school, or, you know, and, uh, I wonder if it's gonna play for me here. So I'll, I'll send you the link on that too, but just a great opportunity, there's music that goes along with it, it did a great job with this, and just gave it a, an indication of kind of what was going on during that time. We also had, you know, on homecoming, which we're gonna kind of move into in a little bit, um, just making sure that everybody had all the stuff that they needed for, you know, for the pep rally and everything, so just seeing these kids in all of their gear and making the connections is really, really kind of brings us back to why we do what we do, so, um, and when you wanna see a five-year-old walking around with a fear the chirp shirt, you can't, you can't, can't replicate that, man. They're fearing that chirp all day, so, so that's, uh, kudos to, to our social media team, kudos to Ashley, who I know runs the, does the reels for everybody, so very cool stuff going on there, just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And you can see that on our Instagram feed, and, uh, please feel free to jump over there if you have the opportunity.
There is one, if you go on our website too, those fear the chirp shirts, they're, the kids are sitting on the, um, curb for the parade, and the whole girls volleyball team is coming through giving them high fives, it's like the coolest.
What'd you say, it was on the Facebook page?
It's right on our opening page, on our district page.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's cool. Oh, yeah, oh, not to, on now the Facebook page, just on the district page?
Yep, on our website.
There we go. All right, cool. Getting some glitch, there we go.
Sweet, we can be sick there.
I know, right, I'm so sorry, yeah, but there it is.
It'll be coming here. Oh.
Yeah, that was really cool, great stuff. I need the molder lawn over there.
That one. Oh, that's cute.
Very cool, so another thought, uh, just to make sure you keep, keep, keep keeping up with all the social media stuff, because we've got a lot of really great things going on there, and this is another chance for us. Of course, of course. All right, you're good to go, all right, good, thank you so much. Okay, Jeff?
Yep, um, kind of the same thing, you know, we're, we're off and running in the middle school. Um, the open house was a, you know, we teamed up district-wide with the open house, and, um, the staff, I remember them saying, we can't believe the turnout, I, I wanna say it was almost a hundred percent, um, with the parents coming through, and there was so much excitement in the hallway, it was great to get all the kids back, it was, it was really fun. Um, we rolled right into, we, we spend a lot of time on social emotional learning in the middle school. Um, our first day, we spent a lot on that, we were on the football field and getting connected with activities, and the staff does a wonderful job with that, and it rolled us into a new schedule this year, um, where we moved lunch back an hour, um, which really, you wouldn't think it would be that significant, but we rolled in a breakfast at about nine fifteen, and so it puts our three block hours in the morning, and it's worked out really, really well. Um, the kids seem to get to noon, they get to eat lunch, and then they, it rolls them into our, um, that was the big meanie at the end of the year. Last year, I got rid of study halls, and, uh, and we decided to eliminate cell phones, um, in, in the middle school, and what happened was we created a launch class, and it's been going super well. We have kids doing robotics, tearing apart transmissions, cooking, advanced coursework taking, um, advanced math courses in our alt-ed program to doing Y T Y with the, um, kids, so it's kind of, kind of took the idea of our teacher growth goal and added it into the middle school, where they have passion, um, where they can do these activities, and from a tech side of things, I don't have to worry about blocking kids on video games, I don't have to worry about cell phones, and they're all, they're all working. I, one, Mr. Stanky, he goes, I got a problem, and I said, well, what is it? He goes, these kids skipped lunch, and they're in the shop working on the three D printer. I said, oh, man, that's darn, you know, of all things, you know, so they're printing and running the lasers, and I, I could be more proud of how, how the year is going. Now, we've had some, you know, we've had some things to work on, but working through that, um, we were just able to get a couple more aides hired to support some of our other areas in the middle school, um, and our football, volleyball, and cross-country teams are all off and running too, so it's been, it's been a good start in the middle school.
Thank you.
In high school, we also, uh, the, uh, the orientation day, the big part for that for us is high school, for having freshmen come in and do orientation. Uh, the transition between eighth grade can sometimes be difficult, we have a great group of core teachers that work through that. We started at orientation, but they do a lot of interventions during our cricket time to make sure everybody's going along a, a good path of getting themselves acclimated and rigor of the classes and things like that. So so far, everything is going really well, that group has done a lot, every year they've kind of added another, another, um, tool to help students, um, transition, and they're doing a really good job with that. We also, um, start our senior freshman mentoring period, um, right away the first day, which is really great. Um, students are able to kind of connect with somebody and, you know, kind of figure out different things throughout the school. The years of experience are, are imparted on our freshmen, um, so that's going really well. We continue to do that each Wednesday here through, through October, where we can kind of keep that. through through October where we can kind of keep that connection going the other part of that is we have the students talk about the activities and the organization the things that they're involved in to kind of help freshmen get involved a little bit more um we have several that are in the musical um and of course other activities that we have the other thing um and I'll tie it in coming in a little bit here too the um at high school we really want to give the students some ownership so we've had some things come to our come to the come to the table and we were able to have a bunch of cheerleaders that were interested in reorienting a cheerleading program so they came to us and talked about it last year and we only had three but I said well let's see how it goes we've kind of created it's kind of like a cheer club right now there was there's no dance involved but we wanted to start it see where it goes and and the girls have been doing a great job um create a little bit of excitement and they're really proud of what they're doing and they're out there on the J D football field today as well so um which was really neat um the other things I guess that that we have students getting involved in um our capstone project it's amazing how many students came in with almost everything done over the summer so uh we're really excited I actually got the first note that somebody's ready to present and they don't have to present until after Thanksgiving so this is awesome you know so a lot of those opportunities um they're taking advantage of and uh our student council has done a fabulous job with homecoming um Mr. Walden first of all the last picture that you seen uh he's quite entertaining and we're very lucky to have him emceeing the program so if you ever want to take a look at our homecoming all school assembly you can still see that I think I click a TV but he also allows the students to have a voice and do some things so we had a powder puff football game that we hadn't had for a long time um on Wednesday night uh they the students all put together the activities some that the administration is not aware of until they come to the gym um so then they get involved in things that they weren't prepared for unfortunately or unfortunately one individual couldn't make it so he didn't involve um I don't know if he was tipped off by somebody or whatever the case was
pulled a hamstring
but the students are really driving a lot of the stuff in high school which is really exciting because we want them to explore things come up with ideas I'm I'm able to meet with our student council it's every two weeks to talk about different ideas and try to try to make things happen and uh you know our student council just did a fantastic job with homecoming homecoming across the board I mean I it was awesome but you know a lot of new ideas a lot of excitement um I always loved the fact that the whole school's in there uh for the assembly and you know I think everybody had a good time the dance went very well uh we have a bonfire after the football game which was well attended by our students uh so it was just really a positive experience all the way around and kids did a great job with the dress up days that they had one of the dress up days was dressing up as two different teachers so there was a little back and forth on who they were dressing up as that was a little interesting but um overall the kids are doing a great job staff is outstanding uh we've really got a strong start uh with the beginning of the year and then homecoming we won the homecoming football game too which is a little positive so
great
I'm looking at my complaint about homecoming and it was way too early to have it eighty degrees had a blast by it and nobody showed up and that was
the weather was too good
that's right the weather was too good
the weather was too good
of course it rained on Friday because it always rains on football
we said we need to have it later in the year when they wanna when the kids want to be in a locker
that's right also true also true
that's right alright any questions comments etc for any of our administration alright if not we're going to move on to announcements by the board of education which is just the W A S P convention please let trace a note if anyone else is interested in whether you're still interested in it
yeah
is it all good
I heard you said to the
yeah right yeah you did I'll look at it
alright at this point I'm looking for a motion to convene to executive session per chapter nineteen eighty-five one C Wisconsin statutes at approximately six thirty-four please
a second
roll call open member please end ring
Yeski
yes
Ryan
yes
yes
Anderson yes Knaiel
yes
alright thank you everyone